The Town of Farmington. Respecting History, Planning the Future.
Good evening. I would like to call to order the annual town meeting of April 16th, 2018. My name is Paula Ray. I'm the town clerk. And ordinarily, I would read the warning at this point, but since the resolutions were all available on the table out front in detail, I'm going to ask for a motion to waive the reading of the warning.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Now, I'm going to ask for a nomination for moderator.
Do we have a second?
All in favor? Any opposed? I failed to ask any other nominations. Okay, Chris, it's all yours.
Thank you, Mrs. Ray. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you for your confidence in electing me as moderator of this annual town meeting. The warning has been waived. Before we begin, I'd like to describe the procedures we will follow tonight. Your decision tonight on the town's operating budget for 2018-2019 is not final until approved or rejected by voters at the polls on April 26, 2018. Please note that voters in the referendum cannot change the budget. They can simply vote yes or no. If a majority of those on April 26, 2018 reject the budget, and the number of those voting equals at least 15 percent of the number of registered electors, the town council recommends a second budget, which must be lower than the budget rejected at the referendum, that then goes to a second town meeting and a second referendum. If the second recommended budget is rejected at the referendum, the council shall meet and shall adopt a budget for the upcoming fiscal year, which shall be lower than the second recommended budget. This town meeting may increase, decrease, or authorize an additional appropriation that is not in the recommended budget presented tonight. Any increase, decrease, or addition of an appropriation shall require the affirmative vote of at least two-thirds of the majority voters voting on such item, provided that there are at least 300 voters voting on such item. I'm going to go out on a limb and say we may not have 300 tonight. I will check before we proceed on the motions. Additionally, a motion shall recommend the amounts by which one or more specific appropriations, identified by account number or similar designation, may be increased or decreased to equal the total amount of the increase or decrease. The recommended budget reflecting any such increases, decreases, or addition of an appropriation that is not in the recommended budget shall be submitted to a referendum. We have six items on the agenda tonight. Number one, that the town report for the fiscal year ending June 30, 2017 be approved. Number two, that the budget recommended by the town council for the fiscal year commencing July 1, 2018 be approved. Three, that the town of Farmington appropriate $650,000 for acquisition of a pumper fire engine to replace engine number two at the Tunxus Hoes Fire Station. Number four, that the town of Farmington appropriate $1,935,000 for various school facilities, security, and infrastructure improvements. Five, that the town of Farmington appropriate $1,995,000 for various school roof replacements. And six, to consider and act upon any other business which may properly come before said meeting. We will consider each agenda item separately. To place each of these items before you, I'll call for a motion and a second. I'll then ask the appropriate town officials to describe the item for informational purposes. After that initial presentation, I'll recognize anyone who wishes to speak on the motion before us. I ask you to go to one of the microphones in the aisles and introduce yourself, stating your name and address for the record. I ask that you keep your comments to the agenda topic and to present them as briefly as possible. If you have a question, please direct the question to me as moderator and indicate whom you would like to answer it. Please confine your question to the topic under discussion and do not enter into a debate. If the comment or question is not germane to the topic at issue, I will rule it out of order. If a number of speakers wish to be recognized, I may set a time limit for each speaker so that as many in attendance as possible may speak before the hour gets late. Then I'll call for a motion to adjourn the meeting to a referendum to be held at the regular polling places on April 26, 2018, between the hours of 6:00 a.m. and 8:00 p.m. Motion number one. May I have a motion to move the first item contained in the warning that the town report for the fiscal year ending June 30, 2017 be approved? Motion. Okay. Comments and questions from the audience about motion number one? Hard for me to see. Anybody? Okay. I'm now going to call for a voice vote. All those in favor to approve the first item contained in the warning that the town report for the fiscal year ending June 30, 2017 be approved? All those in favor, say aye. Opposed, the motion carries.
I did notify the registrar we had 59 residents in attendance.
Fifty-nine. Thank you. Motion number two. May I have a motion to move the second item contained in the warning that the budget recommended by the town council for the fiscal year commencing July 1, 2018 be approved? Do I have a motion?
So.
And a second?
Second.
Thank you. I'll now call upon Nancy Nickerson, Chair of the Town Council, Kathleen Egan, Town Manager, Christopher Fagan, Chair of the Board of Education, and Kathleen Greeter, Superintendent of Schools, to begin the presentations.
I'm here tonight to give a brief introduction regarding the Farmington 2018-19 Town Council recommended budget. Our budget deliberations and decisions are based on our strategic plan and the goal of maintaining quality services while being fiscally responsible. The budget has already gone through several iterations before it becomes the Town Council recommended budget that you see before you tonight. It begins at the departmental level with requests coming to the town manager in January. At the January 23, 2018 Town Council meeting, the Town Council set a target budget between 2.25 and 2.275 percent. The town manager decreased the department request by $593,000 to reduce the overall budget increase from 4.5 to 2.47. A public hearing was held on the town manager's proposed five-year capital improvement plan on February 27, 2018. A public hearing was held on the town manager's recommended operating budget on March 13, 2018. The Town Council held workshop sessions on March 14, 16, and 17 to finalize the budget. After the last workshop session, the changes to the town manager's recommended budget were incorporated to create the Town Council's recommended budget. A public hearing on the Town Council's proposed budget was held on April 2. The approved budget becomes the Town Council recommended budget, which is what you see before you tonight. The annual town meeting adjourns to a referendum vote on April 26. The proposed budget has a total capital funding plan of $7,221,220 to address our infrastructure needs. During our budget deliberations last month, the Town Council discussed capital improvements at length. The Town Council has made a deliberate effort to increase capital project funding in order to meet the needs of the town and the school system. This capital budget is comprised of, first, a general fund appropriation of $2,519,000, which is a 5 percent increase over last year, plus reappropriation of $122,220 in surplus project balances to new projects. There are also three bonding questions that will appear this year on the ballot. First, for the fire department, $650,000 for a vehicle. The vehicle that it will replace is 1991, 27 years old. We generally have a policy where every 20 years, we'll replace a vehicle, so you can see this is certainly needed. Second, we have a Board of Education bond for $1,935,000 for security and mechanical and engineering upgrades for Irving Robbins, Westwoods Upper Elementary School, Union School, Noah Wallace School, East Farms and West District. The third bond in question will be for Board of Ed for school roofs, $1,995,000. This is for Irving Robbins, for Union School, and for the Farmington High School. This proposed capital improvement plan continues to fund town-wide infrastructure improvements that include both technology upgrades and the replacement of equipment. Farmington continues to have a AAA Moody's rating. According to the bond rating agencies, this is a result of a stable governing body, financial management stability, a strong tax base, funding our reserve account appropriately, and a commitment to funding our pension in a responsible manner. This allows our town to have lower rates and be at the head of the queue when bonds are sold. As of November 2017, only 17 towns out of 169 towns in the state of Connecticut had a AAA Moody's rating, and Farmington is one of those. As you are aware, the town of Farmington underwent a revaluation process this year. Residential property now makes up 68 percent of the grand list, where it used to be 73, and commercial property now makes up 32 percent, previously 27. The consistent growth in our grand list over the past five years evidences the economic strength in our town. The recommended budget has a property tax rate of 27.18 mils, which is an increase of .5 mils. The average homeowner with a house assessed at $226,776 will actually have a decrease of $26.66. In this revaluation year, it's important to note that the tax impact on a property depends on how much a property has either increased or decreased in value. A tax impact calculator has been added to the Town of Farmington webpage for residents to determine their tax impact with the proposed tax rate. The recommended 2018-19 budget continues the town's commitment to providing and funding necessary services to our residents and the businesses. The proposed budget was developed to maintain required service levels for both the town and the Board of Education, and to ensure that our capital improvement needs are met. We remain well-positioned in terms of economic development, quality education, providing necessary services, without substantially increasing the taxes. The Town Council, following the guidelines in the strategic plan, strives to produce a practical and a balanced budget in order to maintain required services and meet the needs of the community. I encourage you to vote at the referendum on April 26. The polls will be open from 6:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. The town manager and the Board of Ed will now give details about the budget. I thank you.
Members of the public, I present for your review the Town Council's recommended budget for fiscal year 1819. The town's strategic plan and the town's capital improvement policy were the policy guidelines at the forefront when formulating the budget. The general fund budget includes the recommended spending for the town, for the school system, for debt service, and for capital improvements. The recommended budget for Westwoods Golf Course, the Recreation Fund, and solid waste collection and disposal are also included for your review. The total recommended budget for fiscal year 1819 is $106,291,562, an increase of $3,544,427, or 3.45 percent above the current budget. The recommended town budget is $29,573,654, which is 2.47 percent above the current expenditure, an increase of $712,860. Highlights of the town operation by category include the following. General administration has a 6.4 percent increase. Public safety has a .56 percent increase. Public works has a 2.36 percent decrease. Community and recreation has a 1.65 percent decrease. And the other has a 5.47 percent increase for a total appropriation of $29,573,654, or 2.47 percent. I've also separated the budget by object, which includes salaries, benefits, supplies, equipment, contractual, and utilities. The increases for each object are as follows. The salaries have increased 1.8 percent. The benefits have increased 5.47 percent. The supplies have decreased 1.55 percent. The equipment has increased 8.42 percent. Contractual has increased 1.93 percent. And utilities has decreased 1.75 percent. In summary, the Town Council's recommended budget is $29,573,654, which is an increase of $712,860, or 2.47 percent above the current expenditure. The debt group of accounts includes appropriations to make principal and interest payments on the town's long-term bonded debt. The total recommended amount for the next fiscal year is $8,399,011. This is an increase of $1,083,311, or 14.81 percent from the previous year. The increase in the debt service is a result of the requirement by the State Clean Water Fund program that the town permanently financed $34 million of expenses for the wastewater treatment plant upgrade project this year. Special services. The refuse collection budget includes the cost of collecting and disposing of solid and bulky waste generated by town residents and the town's landfill operation. The budget proposes no rate increase. The annual fee will remain at $235 per household. General fund capital projects. The recommended general fund appropriation to support the capital improvements is $2,519,000, plus a reappropriation of $122,220 in surplus project balances to new projects. Shown here is a list of the recommended capital budget projects funded by the general fund. Shown here is a list of the recommended capital project budgets funded by reappropriation of surplus project balances. Recommended bonding. The first year of the capital plan recommends three bond questions. Engine two replacement of $650,000. This is to replace a 1991, 27-year-old pumper truck. School security and infrastructure improvements at $1,935,000, and school roof projects at $1,995,000, for a total of $4,580,000 in recommended bonding. The Board of Education account includes the recommended appropriation of $65,799,897, an increase of 2.54 percent above the current year budget. Details of the Board of Education budget are included in the board budget presented by the Board of Education. I will now call on Chris Fagan and Kathy Greeter, who will discuss the Board of Education budget and the two school-related bond questions. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you, Kathy, our Town Council, members of the public, for the opportunity to come before you tonight, along with our superintendent, Kathy Greeter, to present the Farmington Board of Education 2018-2019 recommended budget. On behalf of the entire Farmington Board of Education, I'd like you to know that the recommended budget, as presented to you tonight, represents the dedicated collaborative efforts and consider judgment of our superintendent Kathy, her team of administrators, including but not limited to Assistant Superintendent Kim Nguyen, Business Manager Vince LaFontaine, Director of Facilities Tim Harris, Director of Technology Matt Ross, Director of Special Services Lori Singer, and Director of Curriculum Veronica Rusak, along with all the teachers in the district. And it also represents the valued input of our entire Town Council, Chairperson Nancy Nickerson, and Town Manager Kathy Egan, and all the town administrators, and I thank you for your efforts through this process. I'd also like to, however, thank my fellow board members for their collaboration, insight, and commitment, not only during the budget season, but also each and every day, in providing leadership and support to the schools, our community of parents, families, and students. We are all aware, these are uncertain times in which we're operating, and we, as a board, are cognizant of the uncertainties related to ongoing source funding at the state level and the impact these changes may have on communities like Farmington, its families, and its students. It's against that backdrop that the board undertook this budget process, knowing it would be difficult to make any provision for substantial increases in expenditures in education. And you can rest assured, there were certainly items that the teachers, administrators, and board members would have wanted that never found their way into this budget. But as an innovative learning organization, the mission and vision of the Farmington School District is deeply committed to a pathway of continuous improvement. Our teaching and learning process is based upon the collaborative interactions among students, educators, parents, and families, and emphasizes the importance of clear expectations, rigorous, standard-led curriculum, inspired instruction, personal effort, and engaged relationships, leading to high levels of achievement for all learners. We collectively, as a board and administration, are ultimately guided in our efforts by the fundamental principle we call the vision of the graduate, whereby Farmington graduates will acquire an understanding of the essential knowledge and skills in the core academic disciplines, and develop the thinking and learning skills needed to meet the challenges of local, national, and global citizenship in a rapidly changing world. These learning skills are embodied in four essential elements. First, critical thinking and reasoning. Second, communication and collaboration. Third, problem-solving and innovation. And fourth, self-direction and resourcefulness. And as you will note from the line item details that will be presented to you by Superintendent Greeter in just a moment, the board's budget reflects an overall increase of 2.54 percent, or $1,627,256, to bring the total recommended budget to $65,799,897 for the 2018-2019 fiscal year. And as Kathy will present to you shortly, in greater detail, you'll see that approximately 1.4 million of the 1.6 million increase is reflected by increases to that portion of the budget captured in contractually negotiated salaries and benefits. As such, approximately $200,000 of the total recommended budget of approximately $65 million is directly related to extending and building upon the value proposition of the educational experience here in Farmington. Nonetheless, I assure you tonight that our board and administration remains committed to extending and building upon that value proposition. As a board, we are also aware of the challenges facing our facilities, so the budget also includes two separate bonding requests, as noted, to address our core infrastructure needs. These are designed to facilitate security vestibules at the entrance of our schools, relocate offices at Noah Walls and West District to the entrance of the schools, address critical structural improvements, and address roofing projects at Irving Robbins, Union, and Farmington High Schools. In the aggregate, these capital bonding projects represent an additional, as noted, $3.93 million. These bonding measures are the result of the board and administration taking steps to address these issues, and these have been reflected in the Farmington High School facility assessment, the creation of an ad hoc facilities committee consisting of community members, board members, administration members, and Town Council members, the creation of a statement of need for the high school, which was approved by both the Board of Education and Town Council, review and consideration of third-party assessments of our facilities from the New England Association of Schools and Colleges and the Office of Civil Rights, the creation of the Farmington High School Building Committee and resulting referendum on a new high school, and the commissioning of a comprehensive K-8 facilities assessment as reflected in the recently completed reports for each of our elementary, upper elementary, and middle schools. And as you can see, this has represented a dedicated approach to assess the infrastructure needs, both short term and long term, for all our facilities. And we feel that we are now positioned to have a consistent and committed approach to improve some of our most important educational and community assets in the years to come. Farmington is one of the best and highest-performing school districts, not only in the state, but also the nation, and our schools, administrators, faculty, and students are routinely recognized for their educational achievements. It's one of the very reasons, myself included, why each of us live in the community here and are proud to call ourselves residents of Farmington. And it's my hope, as we go through the budget, you'll appreciate that the recommended budget allows us to maintain core programming aligned to our strategic priorities across all grade levels, and to continue to deliver on the mission to students and families of Farmington, and maintain our legacy of educational excellence. So, thank you for allowing us to present to you tonight, and I'll now introduce Superintendent Kathleen Greeter, who will walk through the budget in greater detail.
I'm pleased to present the Board of Education's 2018-19 School District Budget. The school district budget was developed to address the Board of Education's mission and philosophy, five-year goals, vision of the graduate, and priorities within the budget guidelines, policies of the board, and state and federal requirements. It is important to note that throughout the budget development process, zero-based budgeting was implemented. Farmington's vision of the graduate outlines the core body of knowledge and the thinking and learning skills all Farmington students are required to master upon graduation. The Farmington's mission is outlined on this slide. Our mission was designed to directly align to our goals and vision, as well as our framework for teaching and learning, which is our instructional model and core beliefs. This budget addresses all elements of our strategic improvement design. The Board of Education's budget reflects a total budget amount of $65,799,897, with an increase of $1,627,256, or a 2.54 percent increase over the 2017-18 School District Here are examples of our state rankings when it comes to expenditures. The rankings are based on Connecticut's 169 towns, with one spending the most, and 169 spending the least. One thirtieth in purchase services. This ranking reflects the work of our business office through regional purchasing that has led to cost-effective purchasing. One fifty-ninth in general administration, and one fifty-fifth in school-based administration. Farmington administrators, on average, supervise, develop, and evaluate more teachers than similar districts. One thirtieth in special education. One seventeenth in employee benefits. Farmington continues to partner with employees on our health care design that engages employees as consumers. In turn, we have favorable trending in claims. One forty, first in total transportation, and one twenty-fifth in plant services. The first driver of the budget is salaries. As you can see, this accounts for 67.66 percent of the total budget and reflects collaborative negotiations between various associations and the Board of Education. Each of the association's negotiated salary increases are listed here, with the exception of our non-certified group, as we will engage in negotiations this spring. The salary series reflects a 2.36 percent increase over this year's budget. The second major budget driver is employee benefits. This account provides for 100 percent of expected paid claims and the administration of employee health insurance. We continue to experience employee health costs of health care services below industry average, which is currently running between 10 to 12 percent. You can see the life and long-term disability costs on this slide as well. The employees' benefits series accounts for 14.85 percent of our total budget, and there is a 4.03 percent increase in this account. The services series includes varied items. The series accounts for 13.71 percent of the total budget. It reflects a 2.39 percent increase. The increase in this series is across several objects. Two examples of increases in the services series are in transportation with new bus runs, as well as facility improvements in major facility projects area of the budget. This is a result of our K-8 facility assessment that was completed and presented to the Board of Education and community in January 2018. The supply series reflects a .82 percent increase and accounts for 2.85 percent of the total budget. This account provides for facilities used in swimming and ice hockey competitions, and for the purchase of a wide range of items, such as instructional, health, custodial, computer, and testing. computer, and testing supplies. The next slide reflects the budget level for the Equipment Series, which accounts for 0.59 percent of the total budget. The series reflects equipment requests. There is a 6.69 percent increase for equipment. The Dues and Fees Series is the last series. It reflects 0.35 percent of the total budget with a negative 10.78 percent decrease from the 2017-18 budget level. This includes memberships to organizations and liability and property insurance. The decrease in this series is attributed to the Town of Farmington's negotiated savings and liability umbrella and motor vehicle insurance. This slide is an overview of the major budget drivers that reflect a 2.54 percent increase over the 2017-18 School District Budget, all of which I reviewed within this presentation. This concludes the operating budget presentation for the 2018-19 school year. I will now review the facility bonding questions. The next two slides provide an overview of the two school bonding questions. The first school bonding question is as follows: Shall the Town of Farmington appropriate $1,935,000 for various school, facility, security, and infrastructure improvements, and authorize the issuance of bonds and notes in the same amount to finance said appropriation? All of the projects in this bonding question were recommendations in our K-8 Facility Assessment, and will accelerate the implementation of critical facility assessment recommendations. Connecticut School Safety Infrastructure Council standards recommend security vestibules at the entrance of schools for enhanced visitor security. The purpose of security vestibule is to provide a secure environment for visitor vetting prior to the admittance into a school building. The cost of security vestibules at Irving A. Robbins Middle School, Westwood's Upper Elementary School, Union Elementary School, and East Farms Elementary School is $375,000. In addition, Connecticut School Safety Infrastructure Council standards recommend offices are located at the entrance of each school facility with security vestibules for increased security. The cost of Noah Wallace's office move and security vestibule is $204,000, and the cost of West District's office move and security vestibule is $450,000. Lastly, there are several school facility infrastructure improvements in the first school bonding question for security and infrastructure. West District's heating loop to replace aging heating pipes currently located under the building slab are in need of replacement with new overhead heating supply lines for $64,000. Westwood's Upper Elementary School chiller to replace the existing whole-building chiller that is currently at the end of its life expectancy and functioning at partial capacity for $220,000. Union's wiring design and installation to be upgraded to three-phase power with surge protection due to insufficient current and max circuit capacity for $141,500. Union's limestone design and installation to be repaired and replaced due to crumbling limestone around the perimeter of the school for $365,000. Mechanical control updates at Westwood's, Union, and East Farms to include motorized boiler control valves, steam traps, and zone valves, and retrofitting digital control valves for $115,500. The total for school bonding question on security and infrastructure is $1,935,000. The second school bonding question is for school roofs. Shall the Town of Farmington appropriate $1,995,000 for various school roof replacement projects and authorize the issuance of bonds and notes in the same amount to finance said appropriation? There are three roof projects included in this bonding question. IAR's partial roof to be replaced. IAR's partial roof areas were last replaced in 1982 and 1995. This will complete the roof replacement phases at IAR for $1,050,000. Union's roof to be completely replaced. Union's roof was last replaced in 1998, and will be coupled with the limestone repair and replacement project for $736,000. A partial FHS roof at partial cost to be replaced. The FHS partial roof areas in this bonding question were last replaced in 1992. This is a partial roof that is in urgent need of replacement for $209,000. The total bonding amount for school roofs is $1,995,000. Again, these two bonding questions include projects within our facility assessment reports, as well as roof reports. Thank you. The Grand List. The Grand List is broken down into three categories: real estate, personal property, and motor vehicles. The real estate count shows a 1.70 percent increase. The personal property account shows a 3.07 percent increase, and the motor vehicles account shows a 0.29 percent decrease. In summary, the grand list increased by 1.65 percent, or $59,416,893, for a total grand list of $3,655,376,464. The growth in the value of the real estate is due primarily to the revaluation of all real property throughout town. The 2017 revaluation process and the resulting grand list saw a pronounced shift in the value from residential property to commercial industrial property. There has been a decrease in residential property values and an increase in commercial industrial property values. The ratio of residential property to commercial industrial property as a percentage of the total net taxable grand list is now residential 68 percent, commercial industrial 32 percent. Revenue, grants, charges, and other. I've broken down the revenues into eight categories: other property taxes, license and permits, fines and penalties, interest, grants, service charges, other, and Westwood's golf course. In summary, projected non-tax revenues are $8,026,415, or a 1.58 percent increase over the current year. Recommended tax and mill rate. The recommended general fund budget will require a property tax rate of 27.18 mills, an increase of 0.51 mills. The average residential assessment will see a decrease of $26.66, or a 0.43 percent tax decrease. In other words, $100,000 of assessed value equals 27, two, I'm sorry, in other words, $100,000 of assessed value equals $2,718 in taxes. It is important to note that the tax impact on a property will depend on how much the property either increased or decreased. The magnitude of the property value change will determine its taxes. In this revaluation year, the tax impact is truly on a case-by-case basis. A tax calculator has been added to the Town of Farmington's webpage for those who want to see what their tax impact will be with the recommended tax rate. The referendum vote is Thursday, April 26th, 2018, at your regular polling places. Thank you.
Now, does anyone have any questions or comments? Please remember, approach the microphone, state your name and address for the record. Questions or comments?
I have a question. I'm Nancy Ruthmeyer. I live at 116 Bradford Walk, and I'm one of the fortunate or unfortunate, depending upon how you look at it, who had quite a jump in my assessment, but since I don't plan on selling anytime soon, because I love Farmington, I'm going to have a 15 percent increase in my taxes. So, my question is this: We're going to undertake these bonding issues, which do look pretty critical, but I wonder, as that increases our debt service, what lies ahead? And I guess I'm thinking back to the high school proposition, which did not pass, but wondering what the plans are moving forward. You know, I am a retiree, and, you know, $832 this year is a hit, but if it continues and increases, when you're on a fixed income, that can get pretty rough. So, I'm a retired teacher. I support education, but I also need to be able to pay my bills and live a decent life. So, I would love some information about that, and whether the town manager, whether Nancy, or whether the superintendent wants to answer that about the school question. I'd love to have the answers. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for your question. I could probably field some of it, is that the Town of Farmington and the Board of Education and the Town Council is going to be meeting in the month of May next month, and they're going to be talking about the strategic plan. One of the meetings, which the date is May, I'll get that for you, they're going to be talking about, with the Board of Education, the high school and some of the infrastructure needs. So, I think that there is going to be more discussion about the high school, and also about all the needs in the school system for those types of things. That said, the town has worked very hard over the last 10 years to reduce our debt, so that we have some capacity for different projects that go on. We do have a Water Pollution Control Authority project that is a large project, but we also have a considerable amount coming off, which we've planned for. So, I think that we are going to be looking forward to our strategic meetings and looking at the high school and some various things, but right now, I think that's, there is always going to be other projects coming in, but I will tell you that we have planned to try to make sure that we always can take on some amount of debt, and, you know, has structured our debt to have the capacity to take on projects in the future. And, May 15th, that's the meeting at, with the Board of Education at the high school, and that's going to be at the Farmington High School.
Sir, you have to stand at the microphone? No, sir, if you could just go to the microphone and state your name and your address. Thank you. Ryan Lindroff, 4 Chelsea Place, Farmington, Connecticut. Retirement contribution, question: What's the source of that number? It looks really low to me. Was that an actuarially calculated number from an independent source? I just want to know how you came up with it, because it, it looks really low.
Yes. The answer is yes. It was by the auditors, an independent auditor, and we followed their recommendations to fund our pension and retirement contribution appropriately.
Is there somewhere where we can get more information on that calculation?
Sure, absolutely. If, I'll have my assistant grab your name, and we can get some more information for you.
Yeah, I'll, I'll be interested in that. It just, I mean, as, as a former finance executive, and looking at the relationship between that and your salaries, it just looks very low.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Good evening, council members. My name is Inez St. James, 11 Brightwood Road, Unionville, and I'm coming to share with you my sincere hope that our town can get behind any bonding proposals to help support our schools. Our students are simply not surrounded by the right learning environment to support what they are supposed to do, which is to learn. Roof leaks, outdated equipment, crowded space are all symptoms of infrastructure neglect that I wish more members of our community could see and then act upon, as I hope to see our town do so in the very near future. Unfortunately, I feel that way too many people view maintenance and other infrastructure programs as somewhat optional, and don't see that there is any harm in kicking the can down the road. I very much wish that my son, who is a freshman at the high school, could enjoy a better facility, so that his learning experiences could be less interrupted, and even more meaningful than I hope they are. In short, I'm here to voice my support, an extended plea for current and future students, for they represent the future of our town. Taxes are never fun to pay for anyone, but if they're being used to support our country's future leaders, well, I for one would consider them an excellent investment. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
Joanne Lawson, 9 Prattling Pond, also a retiree, and also with questions about the bonding. I was looking at the bonding for the, as a result of the Friar Report for K-8, and security, sure, we have to take care of our kids, keep them safe. The roof replacements, I kind of get that, but my question is, if you look at the fire department, they want an engine this year. They, they really wanted an engine and a ladder, but they pushed the ladder off. They've got plans for five years out there. What are your next steps for that? I, I see 2018, but what about 2019 as a result of that K-8? And also, while you're at that, I was trying to look at that Friar Report to see what it said were the, the main things that needed to be done, and the one that I really noticed was, that had the highest priority, was fire protection at East Farms. Is that in the numbers this year? I didn't see it. So, I guess it's just that. Am I, what am I going to look at next year? And are we really taking care of the number-one concerns from that report? Thank you.
The Friar Reports, they are K-8 facility reports that we have online, so if you go to our website, and you go to Departments under Facilities, you can find all of the schools' reports, including an executive summary. We also have included the Tecton Report, that was the facility review for the high school, and a history of our focus on infrastructure and facilities, to get to the point of having the Friar Reports. So, we have prioritized projects, and we have both short- and long-term plans. A lot of the fire safety issues that you'll see in the Friar Report really have to do with if we were to do any type of renovation, we have to upgrade and update fire safety. So, although we are aligned right now, because we are grandfathered, when our facilities were built, and we do have, you know, inspections pretty regularly, the schools are safe, but when you look at those Friar Reports and you look at fire safety, it's really looking at today's standards, and if we were to do a renovation, pretty much almost all of our schools need updates to meet today's standards for fire safety. So, we've prioritized the projects for this year, which included the security and a lot of infrastructure issues that are really critical needs right now, and then over time, we are, because we now have the reports, we will have a plan, both short-term and long-term, we do have a plan, to address all of the recommendations within the K-8 reports. And then as far as the high school, we do have our May 15th joint meeting here in the auditorium to discuss the high school.
Hi, Ned Statch in Sixth Bella Lane.
Yes, sir.
I'm trying to read my notes here, but the lights are out over here, so it's kind of tough. Question to, on a statement that Chairwoman Nickerson made, that the town has a policy of replacing fire equipment every 20 years, and this piece of equipment, I guess, is at 27 years old. But I'm looking at the 2016-17 report, and we bought two new 2017 Pierce Pumper Trucks for Farmington Center Station, so I kind of question need to really buy additional pumper trucks after we've just bought two last year. So, I don't know, when you came up with the 20-year policy, is there anything to do with the manufacturer's recommendations with that? Because I know, at, construction equipment has a lot longer, it's not like a car where you, you know, figure you should get 10 years out of a car, but heavy construction equipment, heavy equipment has much longer lifespans, and I think we should be taking that into consideration. My other comment is, the Board of Education provides us this information, Board of Education expenditures rankings, and it starts out with, we're 130th for towns in purchase services, and it goes down to 125 of Connecticut towns for plant services. My question is, and I guess to the town manager, is why don't we do a ranking for this for our, both our police personnel and equipment costs, our fire personnel and equipment costs, and our town staff and equipment costs? Because I think that would be very good information the voters can have. I mean, if we're given the information on Board of Ed costs and how they compare statewide, why wouldn't we have the costs of, of the police, fire, and town staff, and be able to compare those with statewide costs? Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll take your second question first. The towns would love to have some kind of state ranking, but unfortunately, there's no such thing that exists by the education standards. They're required by the state, and there's a formula. They're required by the state, and there's a formula, and all the boards of educations report in a certain way. The towns don't have that. They're not required to do it. They've been trying for years and years to try to have an apples-to-apples comparison that would be similar to the state, I mean, to the education, the way they do things. So we really don't have that. There's, it doesn't exist. And I think recently, the state has been trying to have a standardized financial form for all the different municipalities, but in a lot of the municipalities, it's not apples-to-apples. But again, it is something I think that the municipalities have tried to work towards, and the state is trying to work on some kind of uniform system. So that's why we don't have it, but we would love to do something like that. The second thing with the fire trucks, there's two questions, two points that I think should be clear is, one is that the benchmark is twenty years. Some of our equipment is older than that. And also, it should be noted that it takes to build large fire trucks more than one year. So sometimes if it's in the budget, it could be in the eighteenth year because it takes two years by the time it goes, it's, it's built. The other issue is, is that that's not our only pumper. So we do have a, a large replacement plan for all our stations, and we try to do, we are doing at least one, sometimes two, are being recommended, large pieces of equipment every year. So it does come down to almost twenty years, and I think we have, and I can check, like close to twenty-four, big pieces of large fire equipment. So we have more than one pumper. So this pumper is at Tunxus Hose, and that one is now twenty-seven years old. That responds out of the Tunxus Hose section of town, Unionville.
Yes, ma'am.
Hi, I'm Catherine Perry. I live at one-twenty-five Garden Street, and this is mostly a, a comment rather than a question, but I want to make sure I understood properly in, in hearing the report that there actually was a reduction in our costs for utilities for the town, including the schools in the town buildings. So, yes, is that true? So thank you very much for all the work that's been done in the town to help us to reduce the expenses for the utilities, increasing the efficiencies within, within our town buildings. And I know there's a lot of hard work that goes into that. And I also noticed that on the bonding question for infrastructure, there are, you know, several more initiatives that I believe would result in additional energy savings. So I wanted to call that out as, you know, these are expenses that the town takes on to improve the efficiency of our buildings, but that we get those, we get some of that money back in savings. And I want to thank those of you on the board and on the town side that work hard to put those things into the budget, and want to make sure everyone is aware of the benefits that we see. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to be heard on motion number two? Motion number two. Anything else on motion number two? Anything else on motion number two? Okay. At the conclusion of this meeting, I will seek a motion to adjourn this to April twenty-sixth, 2018. We're going to now move on to motion three. May I have a motion to move the third item contained in the warning that the Town of Farmington appropriate six-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars for acquisition of a pumper fire engine to be located at Tunxus Hose Fire Station? And a second? Help me out. Second? Thank you. I think we can incorporate by reference the prior presentation of the town manager. Is there anything else you'd like to add to that? Any questions or comments on motion three? Questions, comments? Second bite at the apple here is? Nothing? Okay. We're going to move on to motion four. Okay. Motion number four, may I have a motion to move the fourth item contained in the warning that the Town of Farmington appropriate one million nine-hundred-and-thirty-five-thousand dollars for various school facilities, security, and infrastructure improvements? Motion?
Second.
Second? Okay. Again, I think we can incorporate by reference Superintendent Greeter's presentation. Is there anything you wish to supplement your initial? Nope? Good. Questions or comments? Bear with me, folks. I just, this is not good. Okay. Questions or comments? Anybody else on motion number four? Motion number four. We're now moving on to motion five. May I have a motion to move the third item contained in the warning that the Town of Farmington appropriate one million nine-hundred-and-ninety-five-thousand dollars for various school roof replacements? Motion?
Second.
Second. I again incorporate by reference Superintendent Greeter's presentation. Anything else? Questions or comments? Another opportunity to ask any questions about motion number five? Questions or comments? I'm going to move on. Motion six, is there any other business to come before the town meeting? I'd just like to point out this morning when I woke up, I was pretty grumpy because of the weather, and I thought the over-under for tonight's meeting might be twelve or thirteen. So I have to give you folks credit for coming out on a kind of a miserable day. You were hearty nutmeggers. So that's not really business, but I just thought I should point out, thank you for coming out. It's, it's important to participate. I do now need a motion that this annual town meeting be adjourned to referendum vote on resolutions considered pursuant to the items in the annual town meeting notice to be held on Thursday, April twenty-sixth, 2018, between the hours of six a.m. and eight p.m. at the polling places indicated in the notice. I need a motion, a second, and then we'll do a voice, voice vote on adjourning. Motion?
Motion.
Second. Over here, somebody on the second. Thank you. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. April twenty-sixth, 2018. Thank you, everyone, for participating.